Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Joyner?
Here.
TJ Walker?
Here.
Daltrich?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Javaris Walker?
Here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner. There was a second by Councilman Javaris Walker. There you go. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Minutes are considered. That brings us to item five, which are considerations or deletions to the agenda. We do have a change that's proposed to item number fourteen on the agenda. That's the consideration of sealed bids received for six eighteen Green Street. We did receive a bid from Christopher and Valerie Howell in the amount of five thousand dollars. As to recommended action, we'll change to adopt the resolution accepting the bid. City Clerk has passed that resolution around. If you've not had a chance to read it, please do so. Is there anything else that we need to add or delete from the agenda tonight? Hearing nothing. I will need a motion to add this change to item fourteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Javaris Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the item has been adjusted on our agenda. That brings us to item number six, which is the community update. Now I'll ask our city manager, Elton Daniel Field, please, I'll give him the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bradley Walters as our new Director of Energy Resources. Bradley's in the audience. Would you please stand, Bradley? I'm going to give you a... Bradley is a native of Edgecombe County and began his career with the city of Rocky Mount seventeen years ago as a design engineer. After earning a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from NC State, he is also a licensed professional engineer and brings nearly twenty years of engineering and leadership experience to his new role. Most recently, Bradley gave the city, he actually worked as our operation manager in the gas division for the Energy Resource Department. Just join me and welcome Bradley to our executive leadership team. Now, I'd like to share a few of our community events with you. The city of Rocky Mount will host its annual nine eleven remembrance ceremony this Thursday, September eleventh, at ten a.m. The ceremony will take place here at City Hall in the courtyard by the flagpoles. The public is warmly invited to attend as we honor and remember the lives lost on that day. On Wednesday, September seventeenth, the Rocky Mount Police Department invites community members to coffee with the cop from nine to eleven a.m. at Dunkin' Donuts on Stone Rose Drive. This is a great opportunity to meet and engage with our officers in a relaxed and informal setting. That concludes my announcements for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Managers. If you might have any questions or comments for our city manager. Okay. That brings us to item number seventeen. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Roy Jones, CEO of the Electric Cities of North Carolina. All right, so at this time, what I'll... Okay, we'll move that to the next meeting. So at this time, I'd like to make a presentation or proclamation proclaiming this week as Stormwater Awareness Week, or the week of September twenty-one through twenty-eight. So proclamation from the city of Rocky Mount, whereas the Tar River and its tributaries are an important natural resource to the residents of the city of Rocky Mount and the state of North Carolina, and whereas stormwater is discharged into the Tar River and its tributaries without filtration or treatment, leading to a potential reduction in water quality, and whereas the most common sources of stormwater pollution are household hazardous chemicals, yard waste, pet waste, automotive waste, fertilizers, litter, and eroded soils, whereas pursuant to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, the city of Rocky Mount implemented a stormwater management treatment to control polluted stormwater runoff, and whereas public education and community involvement to control these pollutants are an essential component of the city's stormwater management program, and whereas the community's health, safety, and ability to enjoy the Tar River greatly depend on our efforts as a community to reduce stormwater pollution. Now therefore, I, as the mayor of the city of Rocky Mount, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-first through the twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-five as Stormwater Awareness Week in the city of Rocky Mount, and I call upon all civic organizations and citizens to make efforts to reduce the stormwater pollution, to improve our health, safety, quality of life, and to help preserve the Tar River for generations to come. In witness hereof, I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Rocky Mount, North Carolina, to be affixed this eighth day of September of the year of two thousand twenty-five. Okay, item number eight is petitions to be received from the public. This is an opportunity for public comment, and we thank you for coming to the city council meeting tonight to share your views. We value all citizen input. Speaker comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes during the public comment period. At the conclusion of three minutes, each speaker shall leave the podium. Comments must be directed to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, action, or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period. In the board's discretion, it may refer issues to the appropriate city officials or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comment, which shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes. At this time, I'd like to invite Joanne Jones to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, the new city manager, all our present councilmen, even our city clerk. Good evening. I want to start by saying to you all, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. A number of times limited, but I must do this. I came on the last residential meeting to present my concerns, and then I was a little late, and this is all right, because there I learned and heard that the American Rescue Plan awarded the United Ministries three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, short of a million dollars, and I thought it was awesome, absolutely awesome. So I thought I'd say that. With that being said, I'm going to get ready, special honor to my councilman, Mr. Ruben Blackwell. I'm going to get ready to read my concerns now. That grant went specifically, I was told, to people that have families, but my concern is with individuals I see and I hear and I feel and I touch and I communicate with every day in my communities. I'm going to talk at this time. To the city of Rocky Mount, North Carolina, I so humbly honor your efforts to hear the cry of our younger displaced homeless and grave attention needed citizens, all of the departments that showed up with peace and order. That Saturday, and one Saturday of August two thousand twenty-five, in every single park in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, our patrolman stood firm. I'm so proud of every one of you, every bicycle that carried every officer down the streets of Grand Avenue, living out their oath to protect and serve. They were in the parks, and I don't know who knew it or not because I deal with these children. These children were living in the parks, sleeping, eating, congregating, planning, plotting to survive. And I don't mean legally, just trying to survive. Again, I say thank you. I'm speechless to every listening voice that heard at the city manager's office, the young lady, the assistant, to the city coding supervisor that I sit in her office. She works in miracles with us in my neighborhood, Ms. Changela. Yes. Major Seabreeze is in the building tonight. Major Seabreeze, thank you. Every single request that we ask, he supplied. Who's so kindly and professional to hurt us as citizens needing assistance for livelihood? Thank you. I have only three minutes to ask and request that our competent caring city leaders pull together all our resources and help them because we don't want them to feel abandoned again, create facilities, resources, people?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Ervin Shin-Kenzelli.
Shankarelli.
Shankarelli, thank you. I was right there on the tip of my tongue.
No, everybody screws that up, believe me. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ed Shankarelli, and I live on South Church Street in Rocky Mount. I addressed this board at a meeting this past July. At that time, I brought up the issue of air pollution caused by trains parked in front of my property. Ironically, since this issue was brought up to this board at the last meeting I attended, no more locomotives have been parked in front of my property. If this is due to any action taken by this board, I thank you all for your effort. However, keep in mind that according to the American Cancer Society, Edgecombe County has the highest cancer rate in this part of North Carolina, much higher than the national average. There are two local businesses that no doubt are contributing to the unhealthy air and water quality in our neighborhood. Due to the three-minute rule addressed to address this board, it is impossible to break down specific cancer deaths here. However, if you contact the American Cancer Society for specifics, I believe you will be surprised and horrified. Again, I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to invite Nia Yul. Did I read that right? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nia Yul, a recent college graduate. Well, first, let me fix this because I'm short. My name is Nia Yul, a recent college graduate of North Carolina Central University with a bachelor's in criminal justice and a concentration of juvenile justice, as well as your teen court coordinator for Nash, Edgecombe, and Northampton County. I am here to share and request your support for a very important community event on September twentieth at two p.m. at Hillsdale Lancaster Park. That's next Saturday. We will be hosting Boogie Day. It is a mental health awareness day in honor of my cousin, Brian Jamal Thomas. This day is dedicated to raising awareness to suicide prevention, mental health, and for honoring those that we have lost, as well as those that are still fighting today. Boogie Day will honor, will feature guest speakers who will talk about topics such as coping skills, mental health, suicide prevention, faith-based techniques, as well as therapy. We will also have resource tables, vendor booths, so that we can connect the community to the mental health services that are right here in Rocky Mount. To make the day uplifting, we will include a live DJ and interactive community engagement activities. This event is being presented in partnership with Restoring Women and Empowering Lives Outreach, and along with Pastor Antoinette Cutler, we are committed to uniting Rocky Mount, reducing the stigma against mental health, and bringing awareness to everyone, letting everyone know you do not have to face your mental health challenges alone. We believe that by honoring Brian's memory in this way, we are also helping to build a stronger, healthier, and more compassionate Rocky Mount. So I hope to see you September twentieth at two p.m. at Hillsdale Lancaster Park to celebrate my cousin and all of those who are struggling with their mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Reginald Harrell to the podium.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
My name is Reginald Harrell, which y'all probably have already known. I'm not sure if any of you are aware of last week alone, Edgecombe County had a, the Edgecombe County Board had a session last week on the importance of the solar panels that they have in their county. Last week, I know the woman that has done it, and she says she had a very good meeting. I also have taken the time to forward everyone, everyone on this council, the woman that was in the office, for the benefits of the solar panels on the rooftops and on the event center. I'm pushing the event center for right now, but one reason I'm pushing the event center because it's empty a lot of times during the year. But if you get enough of solar panels on that event center, and it will become self-efficient, and that way, the money that the city is putting into the light bill on the event center, it could be used in other aspects for the city. I don't know what other projects y'all might have, but if it becomes self-efficient, and the city doesn't have to spend that money on it, the money can go into other aspects of the city. There is some great opportunity for the city of Rocky Mount. Edgecombe, Edgecombe County has already had a meeting about it. I know, I'm in Halifax County, we've had meetings about it. I would like for the city of Rocky Mount to perhaps get on board, and you know, it's a great way for the city to save money and generate extra revenue for the city. Thank you for your time. I hope that y'all had a chance to get that forward letter that I sent to all the council members for them to take a look at. If you take a look at it, the person that did set it up is an expert. She is at the Center of Energy in Halifax County, which is in Halifax County. They have about an eighty-acre lot of solar panels on it, and it is generating, and I can tell you from fact, it is generating revenue for the county. And that is, in the next couple of years, we don't know what our budgets may be, but if we can find a way to save money and help out the citizens of Rocky Mount on the light bill, or however the city chooses to use the money appropriately, wherever it go to, it will help out everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Thelma Sue Bullard to the podium. Did I read your name right?
Partially.
I'm sorry.
It's Thelma Lee Bullard.
Thelma Lee, my apologies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I am Dr. Thelma Lee Bullard, and I'm a candidate for Rocky Mount City Council, seat for Ward seven. I was read here in Rocky Mount by my parents and siblings, with my siblings, by the late Reverend Dr. Everett Lee and Rachel Lee, and I grew up here, so I'm very familiar with Rocky Mount. My upbringing led me to this career of public service and keeping of the village. I retired after twenty-eight years of working for North Carolina State Government and several agencies. The Department of Commerce was my last assignment. I feel that now is the time to continue to serve my community, but this time as a member of the Rocky Mount City Council. I'm seeking the Ward seven seat because my voice as an advocate for children, family, and seniors, the elderly, is my passion. I am especially concerned about the recent layoffs in our area industry, Pfizer and Commons, that have occurred and may continue to occur. Many of the employees are residents of the city of Rocky Mount, and losing their job just might result in the erosion in our city economy. Are we preparing for our people for job replacement, job creation, so that our city can continue to thrive? As the Ward seven representative on the city council, I will look after the needs, not only of my constituents, but also the entire city. My vision here is to hear the cry of all individuals and addressing their needs where we all can thrive, that we call Rocky Mount home. It is my will of the constituents in Ward seven, and I hope that it is. I look forward to working with you to achieve my vision, seeing that all, everyone, not only survive, but thrive as a community and communities of Rocky Mount. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number nine on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. This time, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda inclusive of to adopt the ordinances and resolutions to approve grant agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute required documentation and certifications, acknowledge receipt of the petition, award bid as recommended, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contract on behalf of the city, and to approve the appointments and reappointments as listed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, second by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item ten is a public hearing relative to the following Land Development Code amendments recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board. So at this time, if you could, Mr. Bowkoo.
Good evening, how are you, Director of Development Services?
Joe Seth Bowkoo. This evening, I am presenting a proposed Land Development Code amendment that would add pocket neighborhoods as a land use within certain residential districts. The proposed amendment defines the land use. A pocket neighborhood is a group of dwellings, single-family or duplexes clustered around a single open courtyard, and that property maintained in stewardship with those neighbors. Again, the pocket neighborhoods would be allowed in the city's denser residential districts, including the multifamily residential district and some of the office and institutional zoning districts that also permit multifamily development. The development standards would establish criteria for how the pocket neighborhoods are developed, and require a homeowners association be established, again, to maintain that common area. In considering the amendment, the staff and the planning board have recognized that it is in conformance with the adopted comprehensive plan, and that it introduces new housing that will also complement the existing development in our residential areas around the city, foster the expansion of affordable housing, encourage the reuse of vacant or underutilized properties, and also supports the city's goals for varied housing types. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, or take a deeper dive with the proposed regulations if you desire.
Any questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Walker, then Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a vertical requirement for this oppose, I mean, this proposed item tonight?
There are height limits that would be part of the regulations for the housing that would be developed. Yes, sir.
Councilman Harris.
Mr. Bowkoo, if this, a proposed forty-eight unit complex, twenty-four duplexes, or twelve quadruplexes, would they, what are the parking requirements that would be needed? It looks like the diagram that you showed us tonight, and I had that concern when you met with the COW, exactly how many parks per unit will be permissible?
Yes, sir. There'd be a minimum parking requirement of one space per unit. With the pocket neighborhoods, the proposed regulations establish that there'll be a minimum of four dwelling units and a maximum of twelve dwelling units with each particular pocket neighborhood or cottage court, which there's sometimes referred to as. So to answer your question, each unit would be required to have at least one parking space.
How many public spaces will be there? Because most families have two vehicles.
Right, so that's a minimum established. There could be, a developer could choose to provide more parking to accommodate the residents.
Yes, Councilman Blackwell.
So this is a strategy for core city communities and denser neighborhoods, right?
Yes, that's what comes to mind, and that's what we had in mind when we developed this proposal. However, they could be developed on what they call greenfield or new properties that were never developed just the same.
So would orange street parking factor into some of Councilman Harris's concerns? I mean, do they have to provide, they have to provide the parking for the contained community?
Right.
Does that also include parking on the perimeters with the streets if this, if this is an existing neighborhood?
In most of our residential areas, on-street parking is a viable option. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Knight?
Are you aware of other communities in other cities that are having opposition to this type of development?
Not aware of any opposition. I do know in researching this type development that there are other municipalities, larger cities, especially around the state, and certainly across the country, that have this type of housing as a permitted use within their, within their jurisdiction.
Thank you. Lead on us, Durham or Riley.
I think some of the citizens were opposing this type of development. I wasn't sure if you was familiar with that, and some of the things that the citizens was concerned about.
I can't say that I am, but I do feel confident that the standards we've proposed would result in a predictable form of development, again, that would blend well within existing neighborhoods or as a new neighborhood.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Bowkoo.
Yes, thank you all.
This time, I'll open up the podium, the floor, to anybody from the public who cares to speak to this particular matter. That's the Land Development Code amendments recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board to add pocket neighborhoods as a permitted use with specific requirements to ensure harmony with other environments. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eleven is a public hearing relative to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, five-three-one-one, five-three-nine-nine, and rural operating community transportation grants. Grants will fund a portion of administrative, operating, and capital expenses incurred by Tar River Transit. Total funding amount is eight hundred, one thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars. The local match is two hundred and nine thousand and two dollars. This time, I'll open the floor for anybody, any member of the public who wishes to come and speak on this particular matter. Is there any member of the public that's here present tonight that would like to speak to the, relative to the fiscal, fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, five-three-eleven, fifty-three-ninety-nine, and rural operating community transportation grants? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the required documentation, certifications, and subsequent grant agreements in reference to fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, section five-third, five-three-one-one, five-three-three-nine, and rural operating public transportation grants. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item twelve is a consideration of resolution authorizing execution of opioid settlements authorizing execution of opioid settlements with secondary opioid manufacturers, Purdue Pharma LP, the Sackler family, and to approve the third supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. At this time, I'll receive a motion to adopt the resolution and to authorize the mayor to execute and sign supplemental agreements on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmen Suwam, Jabars Walker, and TJ Walker. How about that? Is there a need for further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item thirteen is consideration of resolution adopting the following administrative policies related to the revised administration of Housing Assistance Program. That's policy Roman numeral two, point two-nine, A, Assistance Policy Urgent Repair Program, and B, Policy Roman numeral two, twenty-nine, B, Procurement and Disbursement Policy Urgent Repair Program. At this time, I'll receive a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Knight. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item fourteen is consideration of the sealed bids received from six-eighteen Green Street. We did receive a bid from Christopher and Valerie Howell in the amount of five thousand dollars. This time, I'll receive a motion to report to city council, if, well, have reported that their bid has been received. And I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the deeds conveying the property on behalf of the city, if accepted, and to adopt the resolution accepting the bid. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Knight. Any need for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item fifteen is consideration of the INCIPPA Board appointments, the first alternate commissioners Bradley Waters, Director of Energy Services, and the second alternate commissioner is Elton Daniels, our city manager. This time, I'll receive a motion to approve the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Daughtry, seconded by, I'm sorry, Tom Harris, and Tom Harris and Richard Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Is there any other business to appear before the city council tonight? Hearing none. I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.